Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Are you Chuck?
No, I'm Herb Gilmore.
Oh, hi Herb.
Herb, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Andrew.
And Donna.
I'm hosting the meeting tonight because the usual person who hosts is not available. So it's me.
Okay, all right.
Or it's. So we'll just wait for the others. It looks like two others are here. Still muted. I'm going to ask them to unmute, but I've done this before. They may not want to unmute. So we'll see. Where are you right now?
We're in Amherst.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We've lived here since 2002.
All right. A little bit, my connection's a little slow, but I thought you said 2002, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Where are you from originally?
I was born just outside of Boston and then lived in various places, North Carolina, New Hampshire, Pittsburgh, England for a while.
And I was born and raised on Long Island.
All right.
Then I went, I lived in upstate New York for a while and in Vermont and then in Pittsburgh and we moved here from Pittsburgh.
Okay. Nice area, right?
We'd love it here. Very happy here. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I moved from the Boston area. Carol and I moved out here 30 years ago to raise our kids.
Yeah, same for us.
Yeah, our kids were, let's see here, three and not yet one when we moved here.
Yeah.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, so they, you know, they grew up here in Amherst, the ability to walk to all the public schools and was pretty nice. Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's all right, Herb, since in case it may be helpful to show some diagrams, I was going to join from a second device and.
That's fine. I also pulled up what you sent. Put it on my email so I can connect to those and try to share. So sharing would be difficult from your end unless you can put it up on screen unless I make you the host.
Right. Oh, I think, let's see, I think I can put it up on screen and this will allow me to maybe draw some pictures on it in case that's helpful. I don't think you have to make me the host. I think you can.
It depends on your settings that you have on.
I know, I know that, but I know in the past we've had to relinquish hopes, the host to the person who is showing this stuff, but I uploaded all your diagrams. Like I say, I might have to go through my email, but we'll get there if we need to.
Okay. Just a minute, click on screen, see what it says.
Oh, people are waiting. All right, I'm going to go get them. Like talking and here I am waiting.
You have permission.
Yeah, but he has to let me in here.
This way. Here they go. They'll all be here in a second.
Okay, sounds good.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello, everybody. What do we have? Is it seven? It's 7:01. Okay, that's, we can begin, although I want to. Okay, all right, why don't we call the meeting to order at 7:01? And I want to open this meeting as I stated on the agenda with the announcement that the governor's COVID-19 mandates are amended, as amended are no longer in effect and this meeting is being recorded, but I assume you all know that anyway. So I want to move to the third item of the agenda, which is the approval of any and all unapproved minutes for the ZBA meetings and or joint ZBA planning board meetings through June 7, 2022. I believe all meetings have been approved through the end of last calendar year. I call upon my two other members, if you can verify that as far as you understand, all all minutes have been approved through the end of 2021. Does anybody have a view on that? That's at least my records.
Yes, they have, including January 2022.
Okay, all right. So in my understanding, Herb, and I thank you very much. I have in front of me two other sets of minutes that appear to have also been approved. One of them is April 11, 2022. And it says, at least when what I received today from you, and I guess you received it from our land use clerk, that the minutes of February 16, 2022 were approved on April 11, 2022. Is that our, do we all agree on that?
Yes, they were approved by the planning board.
Okay, okay, all right, so.
So some of those were joint meetings that we have, we have to approve our part of them.
Okay, so then I asked for a motion. We all have them. The planning board approved these minutes. We were there and I asked one of you to make a motion to approve what's now draft minutes of February 16, 2022. And if I can have that, let me shut off my devices here. Any motion for that?
No move.
Okay, Jeff Lacy and seconded by Herb Gilmore. Any reason for any discussions? Hearing no reason for discussion. I'll, I'll make the roll call. Jeff Lacy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Herb Gilmore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chuck Damari, how do you vote? Aye. The minutes of February 16, 2022 are hereby approved as they were already approved by the planning board on April 11, 2022. Now now move to another set of draft minutes. These are the draft minutes of March 14, 2022. And I see that the planning board approved these minutes on May 9, 2022. And we have not, so I would like to entertain a motion for us to approve these minutes, these draft minutes of March 14, 2022.
No move.
Okay, second, any second?
Second.
Okay, any reason for any discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to take a roll call. What do you say, Herb Gilmore?
Aye.
What do you say, Jeff Lacy?
Aye.
What can you say, Chuck Damari? Aye. The minutes are unanimously approved of March 14, 2022. Again, as already approved by the planning board of May 9, 2022. There was one additional meeting between the planning board and the zoning board, but we did not, the zoning board did not notice that meeting and there was no reason to notice that meeting as discussed between the chair of the planning board and myself, because that determination was a sole determination of the planning board. So there are no minutes that I have at least.
Was that 5:18?
Yes, 5:1822. As far, as far as I see, that was a formal meeting by the planning board that is still needs to be approved. So they have minutes.
And they need to approve those minutes. I don't know if they have or not. Do we know?
They have not. As of today, they have not.
Okay, so.
The question is, do we need to approve them prior to them or do we need not to approve them at all?
I don't think we approve them at all because we were mere guests at that meeting. We just, Deacon and I discussed, Deacon Bonner, the chair of the planning board, and I discussed a day or two before that meeting that this, this is the sole jurisdiction of the planning board that they would like to hear any opinions we might have, but we were not going to deliberate and we were not going to make any decisions. And we certainly didn't make, we did not vote on anything. We did not make any decisions on that evening. So that, so that's, it was a sole vote of the planning board and not the zoning board. So as far as I'm concerned, we cannot approve minutes when a meeting was not duly noticed by the zoning board. Again, it was called at a late time. I have to notice meetings 48 hours in advance and it wasn't noticed. So Deacon thought we should come anyway. We did. We listened and I guess the planning board will at some point in time approve those minutes. So as far as I'm concerned, at least through June the 7th of this year, in fact, through today, the zoning board of appeals is up to date 100% in our minutes. Now, obviously, is this meeting tonight and we'll have to approve these minutes at some future date, which I understand Jeff Lacy has proposed several dates for another meeting. Jeff, you still want another meeting, right?
Yes, please. In order to finish up with the decisions that we will probably, that will probably flow from the two cases we're doing tonight.
Okay, so and item number 11 on the agenda is scheduling our next ZBA meetings and so we'll do that when we get to that on the agenda. All right, now let's move along to the site plan review application of Michael A. Vinsky for a 6.15 kilowatt ground mounted residential solar array at 391 West Pelham Road. And he wrote this application pursuant to the zoning bylaws section 9.1-1B. This is case number 22002. Michael Vinsky, are you here? There you are.
I am.
Okay, Michael, you've received your application and we've received, all of us have received all of the extensive detailed plans. I know I have, and I want to put on the record that I did a site visit earlier this month. Jeff Lacy, did you do a site visit since the application has been?
Yes.
Okay, Herb Gilmore, have you done a site visit as well?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so all three of the members have done a site visit and I'm assuming all of us have thoroughly reviewed the application and the plans. I do note that, Michael, you did submit to me, and I'm not sure if you did or not, to the others, a one-page amendment. Is that right, Michael?
Yes, I sent that to all three of you.
Okay, so everybody has that. And just for the record, Michael, can you explain the purpose of that amendment, just so we have it on the record?
The original document showed the the trenching that goes from the, from the array to the house in the wrong position. So the engineers reworked that and the amended document shows the trenching in the correct position.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Chuck, just one moment. The number on the case?
I'm taking the notes too here.
Oh, yes. Okay, I'm sorry. It's 22-002.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm cutting out here. So I may have to move. Give me that number again.
It is 22 002.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, Michael, the floor is yours. I, you put the application together, you have the plans, you made an amendment. You've obviously read the bylaws. I only have one question is, and I think it's fair to say, based on my own review, and I know the, I think I already know the answer to the question. And that is my site visit is this proposed solar array, once built, will not be seen from west, from the road, West Pelham Hill Road. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay. Do you want to just explain a little bit about the project and then I'll turn it over to my other members and see if they have any other questions beyond my question?
Other than, other than the fact that, you know, I, I think it's important at this, at this time to to go towards solar for electrical generation. I think it makes sense as far as environmental concerns are are, are considered and the, the fact that I have a pretty good location to, to capture a significant portion of the solar energy that's, that's coming into my yard. It just seemed to make sense at this point to go ahead and, and invest in this sort of a, a project. So that's basically the bottom line of, of my interest in, in pursuing this.
Okay, let me call my other members and ask either of you, Jeff, Lacy, or Herb Gilmore, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I'll start. I mean, really, this is a by right use. We do a site plan review and from from drafting this part of the, of the bylaw with respect to solar, it's, it's really just the sighting with respect to visibility from the road and in particular neighbors. We're trying to keep facilities like these out of people's face and that's a simple way of explaining what we're after here. And this meets all those requirements. I mean, it's really in his backyard. It's far from the neighboring house. Can't really see it from the road. Maybe you might catch a glimpse in the winter if you try very hard. But this meets all the requirements of, of all of these that we've done.
Thank you, Jeff. Herb, do you have any questions for the applicants?
Well, I agree. I went there. I saw it. It can't be seen from the road. I don't think it can be seen from neighbors, even if the leaves are down. So I think it's absolutely appropriate.
Are there any abuddies here that want to speak in favor or not about this project? Are there any abuddies here? Okay, there are none. I have no further questions. Do I, Michael, do you have any final comments you want to make before I, I, we go to procedural decisions?
I'm, no, I, I'm not that familiar with what the ZBA does or anything and I just, I, I hope that all the documentation is, was in order and met your expectations and everything. And I just, you know, I, I hope this is something that you can agree is, is a good idea and will allow me to pursue this.
Okay, they certainly appear to be in order as far as I'm concerned. I ask you, Herb Gilmore, and you, Jeff Lacy, are we ready to have discussions and on this? You know, we do, I know we contemplate a final decision, not necessarily tonight. But you'll be drafting, or you haven't drafted this proposed.
No, under, under these, we don't have the same burden with special permit of having to produce written decision 10 days after, after voting. So I, I would like to move that we approve this application of Mr. Vinsky, this 22-002.
Okay.
And, and that I prepare a decision associating for our next meeting so that we can sign it.
Can I have a second on that?
My second.
Okay, any reason for further discussion? I'm not hearing any. I'm going to move to vote. Herb Gilmore, what do you say?
Aye.
Jeff Lacy, what do you say?
Aye.
Chuck Damari, what do you say? Aye. It's unanimous. So you'll prepare the proposed decision for our next meeting that will happen certainly sometime before July 1st or on July 1st, I suppose. Hopefully not. Okay, that's, we're done. Congratulations, Michael. You'll, you won't have it right tonight or tomorrow. I thought maybe you would, but you'll certainly have it by the end of the month or the first day of July. Okay, you can stay and hang out, watch the rest of the proceedings if you'd like.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Michael, thank you. The next order of business is a public hearing on the application of Donna and Andrew McCollum for property located at 14 Lake Drive for a special permit for the reconstruction of their house on the existing foundation footprint, but increasing the current height of approximately 17 feet to no more than 28 feet, but actually 26 feet from the roadside grave. The new house will sit well within conforming setbacks to the lake, but enlarged by three feet, two inches on that side and preserve the footprint side setbacks, shifting the non-conformity from the south side line into conformity, resulting in a more balanced conformity. This is case number 22-001. Okay. Just for the record, I want to say that I did a site visit on this application earlier this month and asking Jeff Lacy or Herb Gilmore if you also did site visits at this subject premises sometime in the month of May or June.
Yeah.
Did?
Yes.
Okay, you both, so all three of us have done that. Okay, I do want to read some other things into the record that was not a part of the original. I assume the two of you have reviewed the original application thoroughly with all the attachments, correct? And the plan well that was submitted. Okay. There was, I believe there was, and I have it somewhere. Here it is. Know if the two of you have it. It was not submitted with the original application, submitted to me later. I have a letter dated May 11, 2022, and I want to read this into the record to whom it may concern. As a direct abada to Donna and Andrew McCollum's property at 14 Lake Drive, I am writing in support of their proposed improvements to the property. I have had a chance to review their plans and I am pleased with how their proposed new home will fit in with the character of the, of and add value to the neighborhood. I am also quite pleased with their proposal to move the house further from our shared border as this will create a more balanced space between our two homes and their home and their immediate northern neighbor's home. I look forward to the completion of their project and positive impact that this will have on our community. Sincerely, Joseph Gory, 16 Lake Drive.
I think I've read that before, Chuck.
Excellent, okay. I don't know if you've read this, Herb, but I received it after the application, so.
I know, I, I received it and I read it.
Okay, fantastic. Okay. Let me now turn to the applicants. So I get the application in front of me. I have it in front of me. I assume, I, I see a couple here. I assume one of you is Donna. Is that right?
Can you raise your hand?
And I assume the other one is Andrew. Is that correct?
Thank you. Yes, that's right.
Okay, I, I do also want to state for the record that the notice of open meeting, of the open hearing was published in the Hampshire Gazette in two consecutive weeks, at least a week prior or more to this hearing. To the two of you now, Donna and Andrew, to tell us why, you know, you can assume we've done the site visits. We have read the application. I have in front of me color, very colorful plans that I'm looking at. I can see the lake. I can see your home. I can see 16 Lake Drive on one side. I can see 12 Lake Drive on the other side and 18 Lake Drive further down the road. So I have it in my mind. I know what it is. I wrote the application. Tell, talk to us about this.
All right, thank you first of all to the whole, all the ZBA members for your consideration. In order to better answer any questions you might have, we brought a full team with us here today, including site surveying and design and construction. Actually, our construction partner is in the waiting room, Herb, waiting to be admitted to the meeting. That's John Campbell. Maybe I just ask just very briefly for Garth and then Chris to introduce themselves.
Hi, Garth Rollenbach with CNH Architects. Been working on the design with the McCollums and the rest of the design team.
Chris Chamberlain, civil engineer with Berkshire Design Group.
Yeah, and John, just a brief introduction.
Can you state your name?
Okay, yeah, you're muted.
I'm muted.
John, you're muted.
Unmute, John. John, unmute.
Apologies there. I'm John Campbell.
The delay getting you on, John.
No worries at all.
All right, let me turn it back to you, Donna and Andrew. If you would like, if you, if you'd like to, you can speak to it or you can ask any of your, your experts that are here, your, your supporters, if you want them to explain it or.
We can do as you think best, but I thought we'd start with a brief.
I think that we are, we're prepared to present a little bit on it. And then if you have more questions, that might be better answered by them.
Go ahead.
And ready. But I just wanted to start also by saying thank you so much for all your time and your hard work on this project and all the things you do for the ZBA and the town of Sheets Ferry. We know that you've got the environment and the beauty of the area and the economic health of Sheets Ferry in mind when you're working. And we just really appreciate your time and attention to this project, which we're to this project, which we're really excited about and hopeful for.
So here is a site plan showing the existing conditions. Oops, sorry. Let me see if I can do this. Like, yes, our house, the current house here.
The right.
The house to the southeast, which will called maybe called the south here, and then the house to the house to the northwest here.
Okay.
As summarized by the chair, the proposed plan would preserve the twenty-four foot width of the house while shifting it further away from our closest neighborhood to come into conformance at fifteen feet and also extend it slightly towards the lake here. Effectively opening up this space here, which is currently quite tight. And some of those details are shown in this drawing that shows both the old and the and the and the new. So here is, sorry, this and this, right. Here's the current foundation. What you see has this distance to the boundary line from the foundation. And that would instead come into conformance at fifteen feet. The non, the lot is so narrow that there's no way to preserve the width of the house and have conformance on both sides, but the the nonconformance that was sitting at this short distance is lengthened to this distance here. And lastly, by way of overview, as Chuck was saying, here's a view through a photograph. This shows, oops, let me do this again. The boundary line right here, the existing house, and here's the area that's opened up. Yeah, and we think that the house fits. You know, the the characteristics, style and height of of the other houses in the neighborhood. And yeah, with this, we're happy to take your questions.
Okay. Jeff, do you have any questions on the on the project?
Yeah, it's just a couple of clarifications. It shows on one of the plans that there's an intervening lot or some kind of old lot line that might have been incorporated into the McNichol property right next to you. That's not a separate lot. That's that's owned by your neighbor, Don McNichol. Is that that correct?
That is our understanding. Chris, I don't know if you'd like to further comment.
There's no separate owner there.
No, there are no separate owners. It's just us and and Donna McNichols. Our properties are a buddy.
Okay, well.
Yeah, that's a, yeah. It's a relic lot line that we needed to show because it came up in the deed research, but is not in effect currently.
That's it's undeveloped and because of the merger doctrine, it could never be a lot anyway. So it's always gonna join up with Donna's. There is a basement?
Correct.
Okay, so so you're hoping for a drier basement because this is going to be modern and well engineered and all that?
That's right. It's currently a dirt floor basement.
Okay, and the only other question I have was somewhere in here, it talks about a possibility of a live-in home health aid or something like that. And I I would just point out that if you're contemplating an accessory apartment, you know, a separate dwelling unit here of any type, it it would not be allowed because you don't have a large enough lot. You have to have forty-five thousand square feet.
That's right. Yes, understood. Yes, we are not contemplating any any change like that at all.
Just sort of visioning what any and all potentials, but not expecting any any anything other than what we're proposing.
It it would not be a problem to have a home health aid living in the house with you, but it needs to be in the same dwelling unit. It can't be a separate dwelling unit.
Yes, understood. And that would be the plan if necessary.
Okay, that's that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. I I have some comments on the project, but but not questions, but and I think comments will come a little later.
Okay, great. Herb Gilmore, do you have any questions for the project?
Yes, the only question I have is that the actual footprint will be the same, just shifted to, in this picture, the left and shifted backwards towards the lake.
No, the footprint but will be enlarged in just one dimension, and that is slightly toward the lake.
Yeah, it'll be about three feet longer, if you will, toward the lake.
So the you're extending beyond the actual present footprint towards the lake.
Correct, yes.
You're shifting the sides with the same distance between the sides to the left.
Correct.
That's correct.
You're actually enlarging the footprint.
We enlarging the footprint toward the lake, but not widthwise.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's well within the setback from the lake still.
That that's the point. And and as I stated in the public notice that and in the agenda, that you're no matter what happened, whatever you do in this project toward the lake is still very, very well within the setback to the lake, correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
All right, Herb, any other questions?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, if if this project was was nothing more than than expanding it out towards the lake within that setback, I mean, they have a lot of distance between the twenty-five foot lake setback and the house. If that was all they were proposing and it was going to be the same height, this would be by right.
Correct.
Yeah, so the only thing is triggering a special permit. I'm I'm not sure about the side to side, but it it's triggered by the increase in height.
Correct. Well, according to our bylaws, any increase on any side. That's what I think the bylaw says. Any increase on any side, not cumulative, but any increase on any side. I would just refer to six point one dash three B A.
Did you say D A, right?
Yes.
Okay, D A.
No, it's.
Oh, I I I I got you, Herb. I I got you, Herb. They
Yeah.
There there's no problem with the lake setback, but but that would would still be within the side setbacks.
Well, I'm just saying what it says in bylaw.
Yeah.
They do not decrease the distance between any lot line. Any lot line is any lot line. So just the fact that they're shifting it, they're increasing they're decreasing the distance between the left side. So that's any lot line. I'm not saying that that's right or wrong. I'm just saying our bylaws are written to state they do not decrease the distance between any lot line. It's not the cumulative lot line. It's any lot.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, I I agree with you there. So one way or the other, whether it's one way or a couple ways, we're in a special permit.
Yes. Whether one way or several, yes.
Okay. Herb, you made a comment. Do you have any further comments about this?
Well, just that I made sure I went by every a butter that would be affected on the street side. I note that there are ten letters supporting this. I think at least ten. That it's quite amazing that there are forty abudders. Is that correct? Was my count correct?
Certainly probably within the three hundred feet.
I would say it looked like forty abudders.
Could be.
The number I counted. But the the important ones for me were the ones that were on uphill side on the main road. And each one of the places that I looked at that I was questioning were letters of support for this project. So anyone who could potentially have been affected from a view standpoint, I thought were supporting the project. I found that to be good and diligent work.
Let me ask you, Donna and Andrew, do are you aware of any of your abudders that are opposed to this project?
We are not.
No, yeah, everyone that we spoke to was pretty excited about it.
Let me, Jeff, I'm gonna wait just one more minute before I let you comment. But are there any other abudders here who want to speak in favor of or against this project? Hearing none unless they're muted. We'll we'll take that as as a no. Jeff, want to take another opportunity to make a comment about the project?
Sure. I I I found I found this site to be a little different than some of the other ones that we've that we've looked at. There there aren't houses directly across the road on Lake Drive. There are some that are farther up that front on Locks Plin, but there's nothing directly across in 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 any close proximity. That almost looks like it's vacant land. I I'm impressed the way the side setback situation is being improved by centering the house and alleviating the tightness to the south because the house to the north has plenty of room on its own property. So the setback is not nearly as important on the north. I like it that some of those intervening trees between this property and the north property are being kept. I think the house design is is very attractive. It's a well-articulated house. It'll fitting quite well. I particularly like that there's some attention paid to the front of the house that faces the street. That is kind of street friendly. I like it that it's staying on a tight tank. I think that's good for the lake, not putting another septic system in. I see only positive letters of both from people to the side and people, as Herb said directly above, that would have their views affected. Nonetheless, there's four of them that wrote positive testimony. So overall, I kind of feel this is kind of a model of how to do a project like this. I'm very impressed with it.
You have any comments?
No further comment.
Okay, and my only comment is just looking at the law we have to apply according to the statute and according to our own bylaw, for me, it's it'll be easy for me to find that this reconstruction or structural change or exterior alteration or expansion is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure of use. So I I agree with all the comments that have been stated. I do agree, especially with you, Jeff, that it was very well put together, almost a model application. So, you know, I I I feel strongly that this should be supported and that it seems to be supported. So unless there's any other comments, I would like to move to a procedural discussion between myself and the members. Is anybody, any of the applicants, any of the experts, any of the abudders? Anybody else is present here have any other other comments? Then I'm gonna make a make a procedural move after this. Okay, hearing none.
I'm 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 gonna, well, I'm I'm just gonna move that we, you want the hearing closed?
Well, that's what I was gonna, that's actually the discussion I was gonna have, you know, what what we feel right now, you know, what Herb feels, what you feel, Jeff, I've already stated that I think this should be approved just according to this language and the bylaw and the statute. So the only question is is the process that we're gonna use. So do you have a comment on that, Jeff?
Sure, I'm 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 gonna move that we close the hearing tonight because everyone who wishes to speak has been heard and move into the deliberatory phase.
Okay, I'm on that. Herb, can you can you second that, Herb?
Yes, I'll second that. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I sort of I lost my connection there for a second.
All right. Is there any need for discussion? Okay, all in favor of this motion? Let me poll Jeff Lacy. What say you?
Aye.
Herb Gilmore, what say you?
Aye.
Chuck Damari, what say you? I say aye. This is unanimously approved in terms of closing the public hearing. And and now we're moving into deliberations. So I I have started the ball rolling by giving you my perspective by reading section six point one dash three, extension or alteration C. Reading, as I already have read, that this meets the criteria for a special permit because I think we could very easily find that this reconstruction, this extension, this structural change, this major exterior alteration or expansion is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure or use. So that's where I am. I mimic the bylaw, mimic the statutory language of National law chapter forty, section A. And and I think it's a no brainer, but go ahead, Herb. Go ahead, Jeff. Make your state your piece.
I would just say that I went into the project looking very objectively at the layout, the design, the construction, the location, the effect on the neighborhood, all those factors. And I found nothing despite the fact that, you know, this is a nonconforming reconstruction. We we admit to that, but it is I think well stated. This is a beautiful design. It fits well with the neighborhood. It one of the neighbors actually commented how much they would enjoy having a balcony facing the side of the street. I'm absolutely for this. I think it's a beautiful addition to the lake, the right way to do it.
Jeff Lacy, any comments?
I I would I I would echo what what Herb said, and and I I think my comments previous speak for themselves and would suggest that that we not vote on this tonight because of the reasons we generally don't right after the hearing is closed. But that that I I draft up a decision that I believe reflects the view of the board for voting for consideration and voting at our next meeting, which will be in a few days or a few weeks. As we as we usually do.
We have one more part of the discussion. Obviously, we when we approve projects like this, we place special conditions on them. So can we have a little discussion about conditions. I mean, obviously, according to the plan as submitted, all the plans are submitted according to the application, obviously in compliance with any other can anybody think of any others that that conditions to the approval of this?
Probably the standard ones, the, you know, build it as you represent it. I mean, that kind of that kind of condition. It is a special permit, so special permits that are not acted on within. I don't know. Did we change it to three years into two or three years lapse? So building permit or some type of activity needs to occur before the thing lapses within two or two or three years, that kind of condition. So I I would suggest that the conditions that I apply are the are the standard ones, and I can mine our old special permits and and find those. But I I can't see any way this project really needs to be conditioned to improve it.
Okay, excellent. Herb, any comments?
No further comment.
Okay. All right, so let's, since the applicants are here and the and and the experts are here to support the applicants, I know that Jeff, you threw out four dates. I know Herb, you can meet all four dates, and I can meet three of those dates. You want to pick one, Jeff?
I I have, I I would prefer that this not nag me all during my week of vacation during the the week of the nineteenth. So I I would prefer the fifteenth and get it over with next week.
Okay. Well, we'll continue this hearing Well, we'll continue this hearing. And for a vote. On. The fifteenth of June. At seven P M. First order of business besides. Besides minutes and. Procedural things, okay? So is that good for you, the applicants? The fifteenth of June at seven P M, they'll probably be on by. Seven oh five, seven ten, but seven o'clock, and and any of the experts or. Any of butters that that wanna show up, that's fine too, okay? So. Having said that, I think we are ready to move to the next. Order of business. Which is. Education and guidance. Is there anybody here? That wants some education or guidance about the zoning bylaws of the town of Shrewsbury? Hearing none. I wanna go to some. Old business. And perhaps someone can refresh my recollection, but. At some point in time recently, in the last two or three months, four months, certainly in this calendar year. We voted. To raise the application fee. From four hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. I I'm not so sure. What that was communicated. To the town clerk, because I understand, Dama and Andrew, your application fee was four hundred dollars, correct?
Yes, and that's what we were asked to send by the town.
Yeah, okay, exactly. So I I I'm not so sure. That that fact that we increased it to five hundred dollars and it doesn't affect you in any way, shape, or form. We're not asking for another hundred was communicated, but. I wanna say this is when I put the ad in the Hampshire Gazette. For two consecutive weeks, and I wordsmith. As much as I possibly can. In fact, in this. Public ad. There was no. Paragraph like there usually has been during the entire COVID. Time where we have a special paragraph about COVID. Those words weren't in there, yet. The. Cost. Of this application. I can't tell you exactly what it was, but it was in the high six hundreds. The bill was six hundred and ninety-five dollars. And twenty-four cents. So. No matter what was communicated or not to the town clerk. I I I would like to. Propose. Since. It is now five hundred. To now increase it to six hundred. And and. I I think our process is we we discuss it here, at least we put it, I raise it, we discuss it. And we don't vote on it tonight, but I would like to vote on it at the next meeting. I do think. That, and I've talked to some of the town administrators. About this, the town administrator, for example. And she tells me that when she places ads. And other boards place ads, they place the ads in the Greenfield Recorder. And for whatever reason. The Greenfield Recorder is 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 not as. High. As the Hampshire Gazette. I don't know why. I'm wordsmithing as much as I can. I could eliminate. Certainly, I can eliminate a few more words by not citing so much of the bylaws. I I do cite the bylaws because I. Want the public to be on notice about what we're.
Yeah.
I think it's an educational thing for this.
Yeah. Chuck, Chuck, it's probably for the same reason that when I go to Greenfield Farmer's Supply, I pay less for the same thing than when I go to Amherst Farmer's Supply. Demographics and. And and I think all these papers are increasing their rates because by law. You know, these ads have to go in there and papers are looking for revenue, so. I I hear it a lot on my planners' listserv that the costs are going up, up, up for these these ads, so I I would support the six hundred. I think that's reasonable.
Rob, what do you think?
I think it's very reasonable, based on what you just said, your last experience.
All right, and again, we've increased this now to six hundred. Well, we'll be not until next meeting, five hundred, four hundred, three hundred. I mean, it's just going up and up and up. Okay, I'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yep.
For a vote, okay. The next is just saying farewell to me. I will be at the next meeting, though, and farewell to her. Congratulations to both of us for thirty-plus years of combined service.
Congratulations.
Everybody knows we will, our last day of service will be July first. And so I just wanna put that in the record. That, yeah. Congratulate me, congratulate you, congratulate us, congratulate the board, and congratulate the town for keeping us for thirty years.
You run a you run a tight ship, Chuck, and a great meeting. You're a you're a parliamentarian. I ever saw one.
I appreciate it. Okay, going to the next order of business, which is item number ten. I I note from our town council. That we have to, from time to time. And I guess it's every three years. Vote. For a new chairperson. And I guess the statute also says, I didn't know this either. To vote for. A clerk. So. I don't know that, Jeff, you'll be the only person remaining beginning on July second. I don't know if. You. Wanna be both, or do you perhaps we could? You could select one of them. And and. Run for that seat right now, and we can vote right now. I mean, we we have a quorum, we can vote.
Well, well, Chuck, if we're meeting on the fifteenth. I I I think we should keep with our current. Arrangement, and at at the last meeting of the three of us next week. Because I don't wanna be the chair next week. I want you to want you to still be the chair for one last time.
It's gonna be effective on second. I wasn't trying to.
Okay.
Here.
All right.
Yeah, I I'm gonna be effective July second.
Okay. Well, then then I, you know, to just to cover the bases, I should probably occupy both of those positions until I have. Until I have new members to pawn them off on.
Okay, and and perhaps, assuming you voted in this evening. Effective July second. At some time in the future, after July second. You can resign from one of the positions and then have another election. For the. The chair or the clerk, as you decide. Does that seem reasonable, Jeff?
Yes, yeah, and and I think my term is up, actually, well.
Well, your term is up on June thirtieth, but I presume that I assume that they will reappoint you. Because if they don't, there's no members of the board.
Right, we'll 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 make that assumption.
Who knows? Surprise that that's not our power. So I I will formally nominate you to be the next chair and clerk. Effective. July second. Of twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second in that nomination?
A second.
Okay. Is there any? Do you wanna make a campaign speech, Jeff, for these? You know, I mean, I know you've had a. You know, you have a professional background in land use planning. You've served on this board for, I can't even count how many years, and. In the planning board too. I think you've served this town for. Just in land use, planning and zoning for at least a couple of decades. And I know you're schooled in it. Do you wanna say anything beyond that?
No, it's it's just that I that I will, I I I will, I will defeat every opponent that steps forward, and I I I shall I shall win these seats. One way or the other.
Okay. All right, Herb, do you wanna say anything about this nomination?
Well, there's, he's the best person around to do this. I mean, he's he's the expert. He knows it all, and I've learned a lot, and I'll continue to learn a lot.
Okay, excellent. All right. I don't see any need for any further discussion. Can 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 we move to a vote? Is that all right? I see, yes, okay. What say you, Herb Gilmore?
Aye.
What say you, Chuck Damari? Aye. What say you, Jeff Lacy?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Jeff Lacy, you will be the chair of the zoning board of appeals of the town of Shrewsbury. Effective on July second, twenty twenty-two. Congratulations. And you'll be the clerk, because we were voting for both. You will be the clerk. And the chair. July second, twenty twenty-two. So note that, please, Herb, in the minutes. Okay. I I think we've already, we've scheduled the next meeting. For. June fifteenth at seven P M. I don't know that there's any need. For any. Site inspections. The next order of business, number twelve, is a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn from anybody?
I'll I'll make that, but right before I do, can you give me a a case number on the? The the McCallum case?
Now, the McCallum case is twenty-two dash. Zero zero one.
Okay, one, all right.
Hisky case is twenty-two dash. Zero zero. Two.
Okay, great.
The order of the agenda reversed it.
Okay, good. That's 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 what I need to proceed. So. With that, I make the move, the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay, any discussion? What say you, Herb Gilmore?
Aye.
What say you, Jeff Lacy?
Aye.
What say you, Chuck Damari? Aye. Time I have is seven fifty-five. P M. That's not bad, fifty-five minutes to go through twelve items, two hearings. Okay, so.
The 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 congressional hearings start in a couple minutes, so that's round one.
I would like to see that, too.
Yep.
Should be exciting. I I I stopped making the popcorn. Okay, everybody, we'll see everybody on June fifteenth at seven P M.
All right, and and John, thanks for attending. I appreciate it.
John, what's your name, John?
Yeah, John Arstuck, it's been fun being a fly on the wall. I just talked with Jeff a little bit about the zoning board and. Wanted to check out, see what it was like in real practice, so this has been educational.
Excellent. Okay, all right.
Bye-bye, thank you very much.
Good night, everybody. Night, everybody.
Bye. Seven o'clock, bye-bye.
Check it out.
Check it out.